Hi and welcome to Probe Line, a production of Grassroots Community Network. I want to start by thanking our generous sponsor, A and B Bank of Aspen, who have graciously underwritten this program. Probe Line is put together so that you can get to know candidates who are running in the March election and want to represent you. So tonight, our guest is John Doyle, who's coming and wants to run for rerun for city council. Hi, John.
Hi, how are you, Reed?
I'm doing well. Thanks for coming, and let me start with a question. What does representation mean to you?
I think it means listening to everyone, everyone's voice that shares their opinion with us and trying to weigh that with the best interests of the community. I mean, I think as an elected official, our job is to think long-term and in the best interests of the community and not focus on any personal interests, certainly.
Well, it is that kind of conundrum of you have strong personal beliefs.
Absolutely.
And then, but you're also representing people who may have different beliefs. You know, that's come up, I suppose, now that you've been in council for four years.
It certainly has. Yeah, I've come to understand this, that there are less people with a really fond opinion of me than there were four years ago, unfortunately. But I was prepared for that. I know I can't please everybody all of the time, but I think my 44 years of living here has given me a pretty good perspective on the direction I think the community wants to go. And I stand on the shoulders of giants. I just want to keep Aspen very progressive and trying to lead the way and especially with climate change in front of us daily.
Well, and that four years of experience with representation and working as a group, has that been a learning experience, a surprise, a frustration, a joy?
Well, I will say my first council, because as you know, council changes every two years. I think a lot of people don't really fully understand that. My first two years, our council was quite cohesive and we got what I felt was a lot done. Our current council is not as cohesive and we are not getting as many things done because of differences of opinion.
Yeah. Okay, well, I have a series of questions here that we're going to ask, and you get to pick.
Whoa.
Which question it might be, and then I'll read it to you and we'll go from there.
Oh, man. We'll just go with that one.
Okay. How do you, as a public servant, kind of weave or separate your private and public life?
It's actually really easy for me. My other job is an artist right now, so there's no real crossover or conflict of interest with that, those my two separate lives. I really, again, I feel I represent the community well. I've worked over 30 jobs in my time here, starting with clearing ski trails at Aspen Highlands. I built skis for Phoenix Skis at a factory in the airport business center. I worked in the restaurant industry for 10 years. So I have a broad understanding about workers and food and beverage industry. And I've lived down valley before, so I understand the frustrations of that, and I know it's gotten much worse.
Yeah. But you haven't run into the situation of, how do I separate being public and private? I guess in your private life, you're fairly private. You're in the studio.
Fairly private, but ironically, I'd say two, three decades ago, my friends always used to call me mayor because they were like, you know everybody in town. And that's true, and I think that also whenever... I try to avoid city market because when I go there, I get trapped in there talking to people I run into. But it happens at Clark's too, and it happens every time I walk through town or I'm on the ski hill, I run into people I know.
Right. When I was accounting manager, I had an agreement with the chairman of the board that we would go to lunch together once a month. And it consisted of walking across town to go to lunch. Many times, we never got to lunch.
There you go.
But it was a valuable, ultimately, two hours of talking to people directly and not through, you know, a PR flack.
Right. No, I'm quite social, so I like to get out and mix it up with the community, with my friends and family. I've got a lot of family here. And so that gives me a lot of exposure out in the community, and it's very fulfilling, actually.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. And it's a grad school level education.
I bet it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Pick one.
Let's try that.
Interesting choice. What do you think sets a successful person apart?
I think being calm under pressure is extremely valuable. I think treating people with respect is super important and keeping dialogue civil. It's deteriorated over the last, let's just say, recent time period. I think our level of civil discourse decreased across the nation, but even locally.
Yeah, you found that here? In public meetings or just the kind of comments you get?
In public meetings, absolutely. I mean, on one hand, it shows people cares, but again, it's... People have just gotten more aggressive.
Yeah. So being successful is being calm under pressure. And do you think of yourself as being successful then, calm under pressure?
I think I have remained calm under pressure. There have been some moments that I'm not proud of. But overall, I think, yeah, I think I've represented well. I really do. And that's one of the reasons I'm running again, because I do feel the community has my back.
Yeah, well, that's great.
It feels good.
Yeah, wonderful. How about another one?
Let's try the one closest to you.
What's the one thing you wish you knew earlier in your career?
In this career, my political career?
Let's do that.
I actually wish I'd gotten involved sooner. I understand why now because over the last several years, I've reached out to some people in the younger generation who I thought would be great future Aspen leaders. And most of them had some version of this to say, "John, I'm trying to figure out where I'm going to live. My wife and I, we don't even know if we can afford to have a baby." They're in a... Most young people are in a period of their life where they can't take on the extra work. And then that's why most people, I think, that are involved in public office are people like me, who, my daughter's in high school, so the hard part of raising her is harder. Anyway, you know what I mean.
No, I know.
The more hands-on part of raising a child is over with and you can take on other responsibilities. And I think that's why we have more people that are a little older getting involved in public service, because they have the time.
What about if you were to answer it in your kind of lifelong career from when you were in your twenties?
Jeez, right now, I'm kind of wishing I'd gone to law school. But, gosh, seriously, I'm actually really pleased with some of the crazy choices I've made because look where I am. Certainly, there was no plan involved, and I feel just extremely grateful to be here, living this life.
Yeah, wonderful. Let's try another one.
I'm going to go with this one.
How do you deal with uncertainty?
I think it's helped getting older, dealing with uncertainty as, you know... I consciously think about consequences and what happens if... But at a certain point, there's so much that's out of your control. And so I try to think, what's under my control and what isn't? And the stuff that I can't do anything about, if I don't have to, if I don't even bother thinking about that, creates a lot of free space in my head.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty good at dealing with uncertainty by just going forward one day at a time and just doing the best I can with the information I have on that particular day.
Like in your role as a councilman, how do you reduce that uncertainty?
Well, again, I represent the community, so I like to think that I'm listening to the majority. And it's not just, it's definitely not my way or the highway. I want to do what I think is the community will accept.
Well, that then, you mentioned earlier about one of the jobs of a council member is to think long-term. And then a lot of times, people are thinking about next week.
Absolutely.
So it's got to be a challenge to keep your head above that.
It is. You know, but again, our job as council people is to read every packet that we're presented with, to get as much information as possible. And there's a ton available. The amount of time we spend in meetings and we spend in board and commission meetings, it all adds up to a great education and really getting into the nitty-gritty of the issues. So we have more information available to us and we can make more educated decisions.
Is being a councilman now almost a full-time job?
I'll say this, I could do a better job at being a councilperson if it was my only job, but I can't afford to... I have to maintain my art, the art part of my income in order to make the economics work for me. But yeah, that would be terrific if I could do this full-time.
Yeah, I think that's so interesting when you think about council as being public service. In the traditional model, it's something that someone who is in the community and working in the community does almost as a volunteer, as a second thing.
Well, and I think you're aware of this. I considered running for mayor. A lot of people wanted me to run for mayor, and I gave it some really hard thought. But the main reason I decided against it, this election, is the time commitment. And at this point in my life, I don't have the amount of time available with a child still in high school. I don't feel I have the amount of time available to put in the necessary time to be an effective mayor. But I do have enough time to be a very effective council person.
And how does your art balance that?
Well, it's a lot like skiing.
I'm sorry, you're a woodworker, right?
Exactly. It's quite a bit like skiing, and I noticed this this morning. It snowed six inches last night, so I went out and got a few runs in. It's great to do that during a campaign, as well as carving, because it requires your full focus and it clears your head.
Right.
Because your head can get pretty jumbled up during campaign season.
I bet it can, and I would think like skiing or doing a craft thing, it becomes meditative in a way. Yeah, like you said, it clears your head out. But then some ideas can come, that's been my experience. And some of them are good, but some of them aren't.
Absolutely. But yeah, it requires, if you're not focused, bad things can happen. But isn't that life, too?
Right. What kind of woodworking do you do, if you don't mind me asking?
Well, the first thing I ever carved was a totem pole. I was living in a cabin on the back Aspen mountain. And anyway, I carved a totem pole for the cabin and ended up improbably selling the first one for a pretty hefty paycheck. And I decided I would carve a second one. And it kept going from there. I branched off and I do a lot of other wood sculptures, but totem poles remain. It's something people like me to carve for them. I also do just a lot of other artwork, large wooden carvings, gargoyles, Buddhas, stuff like that. Can I mention my website?
Sure.
If anybody wants to check out my art website, it's johndoylesculpture.com.
Great.
Thanks.
And are you in any galleries or is it more direct?
I am represented down valley at the Keating Gallery in Willets. Yep, I don't have a lot of work there right now, but we're thinking about doing an upcoming show.
Yeah, well, and you're in the middle of an election, so...
Right.
Yeah.
All in good time.
I have to ask, a curiosity. The totem poles have an ethnic and cultural background. And how does that relate to what you're doing? You know, is there a sense of honoring it? Or are you doing something on your own?
It's a mix. And you know, I've been struggling with that more and more because of the cultural appropriation, things that keep coming up. Certainly wasn't the case when I first started. And I remember when I first started carving totem poles, I was questioned about that, are you a native? And I'm obviously not. But there were no natives in the area doing totem poles here. And most of the characters that I carve are, you know, I definitely don't straight-up copy other totem poles. Obviously, there's going to be similarities, but... They continue to be requested. You know, people continue to commission me to do totem poles. They are not my preferred artwork anymore, precisely because of the cultural appropriation aspect of it. People just still love them.
Right, well, and that's great. And you're certainly not trying to represent yourself as having a native background.
I would never do that.
It just happens to be a pole.
It would be so easy to disprove, too.
Yeah. Well, thanks for that.
You're welcome. Let's go with this one. Where's the P? Where's the P?
Yeah, John takes the middle of the road. So what role has luck played in your life and your success?
Oh, so much, it's hard to even explain. First of all, luck of living in Aspen. But somehow, I had the opportunity to move up to the back of Aspen Mountain. That wasn't the first lucky thing that happened to me. Spending a summer in Alaska and meeting a friend of my dad's up there was instrumental in a lot of the things that I've, choices I've made since then. And that gentleman carved totem poles, and that's where I first got that idea. So obviously, carving wood's been a huge part of my life. And that also led to me, when I found out there was a cabin available on the backside to live in, I jumped at the chance. And that, living full-time year-round on the backside from 1988 until 2004, it was just an incredible experience. I don't think it'll ever be duplicated again because the community is completely dispersed. It used to be all rentals back there, and now it's all owned by out-of-state people. So fantastic experience, living on the backside in a cabin. And it's just given me a really, I think, appreciative perspective on living in this place and my wish to preserve it so that it remains as special for generations going forward.
What drew you to the back of Aspen?
I'm a skier, always been passionate about it. And you know, when my family first came to town and I saw lifts dropping right into downtown, I was like, this is where I want to stay. I'm sorry, what was your question again?
What drew you to the back of Aspen to move back to a cabin?
I'm just a very passionate skier. And before I moved back there, I have a snow cat and we ran, had a cat skiing operation back there, so I knew how great the skiing was back there. And also, my rent was incredibly expensive in town at the time, and the cost of living on the backside was $100 a month. So that, it was a financial choice as well. But it turned into something quite unexpected. I was able to buy my cabin, and I never thought I'd be a landowner here. And so miracles do happen.
Where did you grow up?
Around Colorado, born in Denver. My folks owned a restaurant in Georgetown, Colorado. And when my dad died, when I was quite young, we moved to Colorado Springs when I was in second grade, lived there a few years, moved to the San Luis Valley for a few years. My sister graduated, my older sister graduated from high school in Del Norte. And she ended up coming to Aspen first. Meanwhile, we picked up and moved to Idaho for a few years. And it was when I was in college that my family moved back to Colorado and we stopped in Aspen first because my sister was here.
And that was your first visit?
No, we skied here when I was a little kid, a few times. And I'd been here in the summer a few times as well.
Great.
So, yeah, it's always been magical.
And I want to ask, you mentioned going to Alaska. How'd that happen, to visit a friend of your father's?
That wasn't the primary reason, and it was kind of... So I decided... So a good friend of mine had spent the summer in Alaska the year before. And 1984, I was a busboy up at the Sun Deck on Aspen Mountain, a huge snow year. And I remember everybody was like, what are you doing this offseason? Where are you going this summer? This was before Aspen was really known as a summertime resort. People would go, like a lot of the people I knew waited tables and bartended, they would go to places like Nantucket for the summer and do the same thing there and then come back the following winter. So I decided I was going to leave town, too. And a good friend of mine had spent the summer in Alaska, and that just sounded great to me, to really get out of town.
Yeah, that's getting out of town.
And so I bought a one-way plane ticket and went up there. And the first several days I was up there, it was raining and kind of chilly. And I wasn't having any luck finding work. And my mom had given me my dad's friend's address, and she said, if you get into trouble, he might be able to help you out. So he had no telephone. And like the fifth day, I woke up in Anchorage, and it was this beautiful sunny day and you could see the mountains and the ocean and the whole nine yards. And I was like, I'm going to walk over to his house. So I walked over to his house, knocked on his door, and he answered the door. And I said, I'm the son of John Doyle, your friend. And he looked at me and said, you look just like your mother, come on in. And he was just this terrific man who carved wildlife, but his meat and potatoes was carving totem poles. And here was this white guy up in Anchorage carving totem poles for yard art up in Alaska.
That's some luck, some serendipity.
Yeah.
Okay. Why did you come to Aspen?
Again, my family kind of followed my sister here, and it just seemed like a great idea to stay. We didn't really have the financial means. My mom didn't have the financial means to buy real estate here, but she did buy down in Carbondale. And I think we rented a couple places in town at first, but that's how we ended up here. And my mom left, but at one time, my whole, all my brothers and sisters lived here. And my older sister still lives down in Elgbell. And my younger sister just moved back to town last year and is building a place in Redstone.
That's wonderful. It's a whole family adventure.
This valley really is our home. I was so relieved to, especially after growing up in Colorado. It was really nice to come back here from Idaho.
And what keeps you here?
This community. I travel, I won't say extensively, but I like to ski and I like to go see other ski areas. And I got to say, the ski company's Icon Pass has allowed me... I mean, I'm going on a trip later this spring to ski Mount Bachelor in Oregon and Crystal Mountain in Washington. So whenever I do that, I always think, could I live here? And even in Europe, when I've been skiing in Europe, it's surely tempting, living in Europe and skiing over there. But the answer always comes back, no. Aspen is the best ski area, ski town, community that I've ever seen. And I'm not leaving.
All right, we have about four minutes.
Great. That one.
That one?
Yeah, let's do that.
You sure? Okay. It's a good one. Tell me about your most recent humbling experience.
Well, I mean, might as well... The first one that came to mind, actually, was during my public life. About a year and a half ago, I uttered a sentence during the heat of the moment during a council meeting that was anti-Semitic. And I didn't realize how hurtful that statement could be. And I learned a lot from it. I took full responsibility, but it was extremely humbling. I was asked to resign by numerous people.
But it's got to be hard.
It was, because when you're asked to resign, you consider it, right?
Yeah.
That's the normal response. And so there I was, considering resigning. But that wasn't the right thing to do, in my mind, resign. You know, people voted me to be in this office and try to be strong. So I gave a thorough apology, which I still mean, right? It was a huge mistake. And I'm actually glad it happened because I think I emerged from it a little stronger. And after the initial outcry, I really felt that the community had my back. And that, after going through a pretty painful episode, that felt good.
Well, that's good. You know, to have that support, but also the opportunity to learn from that. I can see it's still...
It was painful.
It's raw. And yet, you're coming back again.
Yeah.
Yeah. So with, as your experience on council, what has been the other end of that? The most joyful part of being there?
Casual people walking down the street will stop me and tell me I'm doing a great job. I think the one thing that really makes a difference to me, though, is I'm on the Colorado Municipal League, which is, you know, a group that gets together with all the cities and towns across Colorado and also the Colorado Association of Ski Towns. So when we get together with these other groups, they represent, they're also elected officials, which is, you know, feels good to hang out with people who also went through the challenge of a campaign. And so we have that bond in common. And Aspen, I thought when I first started going to these meetings, ah, they're going to, people are going to be like, oh, Aspen's here, the wealthy people from Glitter Gulch. And it's quite the opposite. When Aspen speaks, people listen because we are so far ahead of where other people are on housing or transit or composting or waste diversion. I mean, so many different areas. We are really highly regarded, respected. People want to know how we do things. And I want to keep that foot on the gas. I want to not just be a community leader, but show the state, show the world what we can do with limited tools. I mean, you know, our country is based on growth, economic growth, and government actually has real limited tools to address those. And so I'm so glad we have the talented staff that we do that knows how to, what those tools are and how to apply them.
When you say limited tools to address those, meaning growth?
Yeah.
Are you talking about how to control it, manage it?
Manage it, I think. I don't think you can really control it, but can you manage it? I think we've done a good job so far with, you know, some side effects that we didn't anticipate. But I think overall... Well, for instance, there's a huge outcry to help local businesses. there's a huge outcry to to help local businesses and we do as much as we can. Previous councils tried to keep chain stores from being able to open here. That was unsuccessful. I wasn't part of that, but the sad fact is we don't control commercial rents, and that is what is driving local businesses to close and move on.
We're gonna have to make the rest of that conversation chapter two, because we're, we're out of town, time, not town.
Okay.
But thank you, John.
What a great conversation. Thanks for you.
It was fun. Appreciate it. So, and thank you, and thank you, listeners, for, this concludes Proline for another episode, a production of Grassroots Community Network. You too can support Grassroots Community Network. You can donate online. You can volunteer and you can also produce a show, so thank you very much and know Aspen. Watch Grassroots.